...of the board is present, the State Board of Education meeting of June 14th, 2016 is called to order. Approval of the agenda and order of priority. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
Some move.
Support.
It's been moved and supported, but I need one more person to walk in the room again. I didn't realize she walked out. All right, here she is. Hold on. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, good. Motion carries. Introduction of State Board of Education members and guests. Marilyn will introduce the members of the State Board of Education, and then we'll ask you in the audience to introduce yourself. So with that Marilyn, please begin.
Hello, I'm Marilyn Schneider. I'm the State Board Executive, and you've just heard Brian Wiston. He's the State Superintendent. He serves as Chairman of the State Board of Education. And we'll go right around the table. To the left is John Austin. He's President of the Board. He resides in Ann Arbor. The Vice President of the Board is Cassandra Ulbrich. She resides in Rochester Hills. The Board Secretary resides in Detroit. Her name's Michelle Fecto. Richard Zyley is a Board Member. He's from Dearborn. He's on his way. And the current Teacher of the Year, Rick Joseph, at his final State Board of Education meeting, formally, we hope he comes back to visit. He's a teacher at Birmingham Covington School. And across the table is Craig Ruff. He represents Governor Snyder at the State Board of Education meeting. Eileen Weiser's a Board Member from Ann Arbor. She is also on her way. Kathleen Strauss, Board Member from Detroit. And Lupe Ramos Montini's a Board Member from Grand Rapids, and she's the Board's Association Delegate, National Association of State Boards of Education. Again, on her way Pamela Pugh from Saginaw. She's the Board's Treasurer. Thank you. So Abby, will you start with the introductions?
I'm Abby Groff-Lazak. I'm the Director of the Office of Educated Talent here at the Department.
I'm Sash Teppey, MDE.
I'm Todd Graut, Deputy Superintendent of Initiative School Support Services.
Susan Roman, Deputy Superintendent of Community and Transition.
Wendy Larvik, Chief of Staff of the Safety and Protection.
We could go ahead and have you.
David Gollman.
David Gollman.
Lori Vettel.
Lynn Murray.
Cole Bush.
Helen Doltersohn.
Jennifer Cook.
Jason Stedt.
You're right.
Becky Martin.
Camilla Rock.
Delia Look.
Tracy Hordisky.
Ross Willock.
Gerald Hopkins.
Steve Burdiski.
Anne Hordisky.
And like Nicole Meyer.
Eric Hordisky.
Lori Beckford, Coordinator of School Health at MDE.
Avery Rollins.
Jim Nicolet.
Christine Nicolet.
Becky Nicolet.
Anne Hordisky.
Ellen Hordisky.
Anne Hordisky.
And the young man sitting in the corner over here?
Christian Cope.
Okay.
Stephen Fox.
Michael Hardy.
Marie Carmadennis.
Braden Duff.
Good morning, Edward Johns.
It's a bell, Jack.
Bruce Brown.
Sherri Dickinson.
Good morning, Amy Colton, Executive Director of Learning Forward Michigan.
I'm Jared Robinson. I work in the Office of Educated Talent at the Department of Education.
I'm Marty Ackley. I'm the Director of Public and Governmental Affairs at the Michigan Department of Education.
David Michelson, Michigan Education Association.
David Head Office of Public and Governmental Affairs.
And we were joined by Eileen Weiser and Dr. Zyley, and of course, I want to welcome Craig Ruff back to the table. He had sat here at the table before and had retired, and now he's back to work, and we're glad to see it. Glad to see you back. Public participation, if you do plan to offer public comment at today's meeting, please complete a form and give it to Marilyn as soon as you're able. Forms are available at the table outside of the boardroom, and public comment will begin immediately following the lunch break. Thank you. Personal privilege today has been in the room. All right, we'll wait on that personal privilege then. Committee of the whole agenda, consent agenda, we have two resolutions that require approval before we move to the presentations. The first is honoring the 2015-16 Michigan Teacher of the Year, Rick Joseph. The second is honoring the 26-17 Michigan Teacher of the Year, Tracy Hordisky. The Chair will entertain a motion to approve the resolutions.
Some move.
Support. Any questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Posed? All right, Rick, I thought maybe there might be some, but you know. No, just kidding. So, presentation on Michigan Teacher of the Year Program. I'd like to introduce Rick Joseph, the 2015-16 Michigan Teacher of the Year. Rick is in his final board meeting at the table. He's been a valuable resource at the table, as well as during his countless visits in the field and in the legislature. He's been a passionate advocate for teachers and students. We appreciate Rick's passion and all that he has contributed to the board table and discussions, and Rick will be giving his final Michigan Teacher of the Year report. Please.
Thank you very much, Brian, and I'd like to welcome all of our guests this morning, and I'd like to extend a special welcome to our Teacher of the Year finalists and to our Teacher of the Year 2016-2017, Tracy Hordisky. I have to say that this year for me as the Michigan Teacher of the Year has been a truly transformative experience. I've traveled all over the state of Michigan from Nagani in the Upper Peninsula, all the way down to Vandercook Lake in Jackson County, from Armada in St. Clair County, all the way over to Muskegon. And from coast to coast, north to southeast to west, I've really learned and grown in immeasurable ways, and really what I've most been struck by is the incredible passion of the educators in this state and the ways in which they serve children each and every day, and it has inspired me. And one of the things we talk about in the National Network of State Teachers of the Year is the importance of being an advocate, being an ambassador for the profession, raising our voice, and continuing to be, as I've called it, a nonpartisan political actor, to be somebody who has an opinion, who stays relevant, who is meaningful to the ongoing dialogue that we have in our state in regard to education. And so, in lieu of any more words from me, I prepared a slideshow with some accompanying music, and everyone at this table, with the exception of Craig, I apologize, Craig, is in this video for the most part in some way, shape, or form. The images come fast and furious because there's a lot of them, because I was busy this year. So I invite everyone to please take a look and enjoy a year in review for the Michigan Teacher of the Year 2015-2016.[432.72]
I'd like to introduce you formally to Tracy Hordiskey, elementary school literacy coach and reading interventionist at Zinsser Elementary School in Kennewah Hills Public Schools and our 2016-2017 Michigan Teacher of the Year. Although that accompanying Tracy today is her principal at Zinsser Elementary School, Ross Willock, Superintendent Gerald Hopkins, and Tracy's family and friends. And I'd like to invite Tracy to say a few words about herself. Tracy?
Thank you, Abby. Ross, my principal, shared a quote with me recently, framed it for me, and it's sitting prominently in my kitchen. It's from John Gordon, who is one of his favorite authors and motivational speakers, and it says, "One person in the pursuit of excellence enhances the energy and performance of everyone around them." And everyone in this room is someone who pursues excellence. And just imagining the synergy, the potential synergy in this room just has me in awe. And to be part of that is exciting, it's energizing, it's humbling, and I'm just really excited to be part of it all. Beyond just the inspiration that each of you bring, the leadership, because leadership is more than just inspiring, but it's about maximizing the efforts of others towards the achievement of a goal. And I know that we have a goal of being a top 10 state in 10 years. And to think about the journey of excellence, not only our Kennewah Hills District has been on, but to be part of that statewide is phenomenal. And it's an identity that we really need to believe in and own, much like the identity that Rick was trying to help me own yesterday. He kept saying, "You are Tracy Hordiskey, the Teacher of the Year." And that's, I have to let that sink in a little bit, because I'll get there, I think. And Jared and Rick were trying to help me understand that the Michigan Teacher of the Year is a brand. And what my understanding of a brand is that you embody the culture of an organization, the beliefs and values of an organization. And knowing that our state really believes in equity for everyone, that there is no excellence without equity, and empowering each individual and creating true cultures of learning, a community of practice, if you will, that I humbly accept this identity as the Teacher of the Year. So, thank you very much.
We are looking forward to meeting you in the upcoming year. I'd now like to introduce our three finalists for the 2016-2017 Michigan Teacher of the Year. And please come to the table when I introduce you. In alphabetical order, first is Delia Bush. Ms. Bush is a 5th grade teacher at Alpine Elementary School with Kennewah Public Hills School District.
So, can board members go present?
She's got them right down there for you.
And Northwest side of Grand Rapids. First, as one of the Michigan Teacher of the Year finalists, Delia Bush, we congratulate you. She's from the Alpine Elementary Schools, also from Kennewah Hills Public Schools. And it's my side of the state, so I'm doubly proud. We also present you with this plaque that can be displayed, and it says, "You never stand so tall as when you reach out to help a child." Delia Bush, Michigan Teacher of the Year finalist, 2016-2017, Alpine Elementary, yay for Alpine Elementary, Kennewah Hills Public Schools. And we also have a pin for you. "It takes a circle of love and support to shape young lives." So, I would like to give you a pin that you can probably wear wherever you go. Delia, I also have a couple of tickles from you. Everybody help me congratulate.
Yes, and we also welcome Principal Jason Snyder to the table to receive the plaque for Alpine Elementary School.
I think we just gave it to him.
Next, we have Ms. Annette Christensen, who teaches 10th through 12th grade English Language Arts at Stevenson High School with Utica Community Schools. Her principal, Stephen Fannis, is here on her behalf today. Principal Fannis, thank you for being here today in support of Annette.
Well, Principal Fannis, I just want to say that very rarely do we get a chance to really say to the principal, who gives so much guidance and instruction and cohesion to the school, that one of your teachers is one of the best in the state. So, I want to say, really, for the organizational skill and for any of this department, and if you can assist with this, I'd like to ask you to honor this.
Definitely will, Ms. Fannis. She would rather have done here, but she is actually for the AP test today.
Is it me? Is it hot? I can tell. It's hot.
And I know it's always hard to just be a teacher in your role here, but it's easy to see, teaching to be mean and criticize everything wrong in schools, as teachers do, which is completely, even in schools, if the student is supposed to do so much good for the Michigan school, it's the correct way to do it. Congratulations to you, Annette, and to the other students.
And I want to present the plaque that you can hang in the school, naming her as one of the finalists, so that the whole community can take pride in her as well. Congratulations.
Ms. Cassandra Joss teaches 3rd grade at Burr Elementary, also with Utica Community Schools.
It's a real honor to present this to you, this certificate identifying you as a finalist for Michigan Teacher of the Year program. I think your selection is a tribute to the fact that great teachers don't generally occur in isolation, but are part of a great team. And certainly, the work of Utica School District is respected throughout the state, our second largest district. They are indeed fortunate to have you teaching for them. Our sincere congratulations. You too receive a pin.
Could become blood sisters.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, and congratulations, and thank you for all of the work.
Thank you.
We'll have the principal come up to him and give him the plaque that he can hang in the school, and you're honored to show the whole community that you are a finalist and to celebrate you and all the rest of the teachers in the school districts. Congratulations.
I've invited your children.
Oh, that's fine.
I've taken delivery.
She looks like Annette Christensen.
We'd also like to take a moment to recognize Pam Harland, who is here with us today from the MIMIC Foundation, which is part of MIMIC Insurance Company. The MIMIC Foundation provides tremendous support for the MTOY program. We are happy to say the MIMIC Foundation finances all MTOY-related travel costs during their year of service in an amount up to $10,000 per year, a $1,000 check to Tracy's school, and in the fall, will present checks to the schools of the three finalists. Thank you so much, Pam, and the MIMIC Foundation. Your support is instrumental in the success of the Michigan Teacher of the Year program. We now have a resolution and certificate to present to Tracy. Superintendent Wiston, Mr. Austin, and Ms. Ulrich, please come to the foot of the table and present the statue and resolution to Tracy, along with a certificate, card, and pin.
Congratulations, Tracy. You are the Michigan Teacher of the Year. You're a wonderful opportunity. You're the voice of teachers in Michigan in our deliberation, helping us make decisions that will support great learning in the world across the state. You also, as Rick illustrated, can be an ambassador to the field, help your peers improve their game, and learn what's going on out there, and bring back and be an advocate for what we need to do to improve the condition in our schools and help Michigan succeed. So, we look forward to your contributions and confidence, your passion, and your knowledge you're going to be a great aid to all of us and help us in the education of the state and represent our value to people. Congratulations.
Thank you.
So, I actually just learned something new. In addition to this and a resolution and a pin for yourself, there is actually a Teacher of the Year handbook. So, a little light reading for you, but I'm guessing this is everything you ever needed to know about how to function as the Teacher of the Year. So, this is for you, and this is your pin. And I hope you have a lot of hands, because you also get this wonderful plaque, but it comes in two pieces. So, don't drop that. But this is something we give every year to the Teacher of the Year, which is just a symbol of all the great work you do. So, congratulations.
And we want to give the plaque to the principal to hang in the building and celebrate Michigan Teacher of the Year, so the community and all your colleagues know of this honor and can celebrate with you throughout the year. Congratulations.
We thank you all for being here with us today to celebrate our incoming and outgoing Teachers of the Year, and we'll turn it back over to the regular meeting.
So, certainly, I want to thank MIMIC as well for their participation and their support for the Michigan Teacher of the Year program, to provide resources to not only the teacher to do the travel, but also to the other finalists and to the schools. So, you know, without that, it's very meaningful. And so, thank you to MIMIC and all the providers for your support of the Teachers of the Year. And for all the Teacher of the Year nominees, 178 of them, and the other 100,000 teachers we have, you know, all do a lot of great work. And as some people commented, that sometimes we, teachers get bashed, and that's unfortunate, because teachers are the heart and soul of our communities, and they're what brings our future, makes our future possible by enriching the lives of students. So, congratulations to all of the teachers in Michigan and to those who are representing them today and these finalists, Delia, Annette, and Cassandra, and of course, our Teacher of the Year. Congratulations to all of you and to your families and community. Celebrate, enjoy this, and have a great, you don't have to stay. That's probably the best part. You can take a few minutes, we'll take a few minute break here and allow people to leave if they'd like. So, congratulations, everybody.
I just want to say that in all the time I've known you, I have, my abiding memory of your face is going to be one of openness, curiosity, and almost always a smile. Unless it was so serious, it took so much energy, but you didn't muster it.
Thank you so much.
I just want to say that in all the time I've known you, I have, my abiding memory of your face is going to be one of openness, curiosity, and almost always a smile. Unless it was so serious, it took so much energy, but you didn't muster it.
We thank you all for being here with us today to celebrate our incoming and outgoing Teachers of the Year, and we'll turn it back over to the regular meeting.
So, certainly, I want to thank MIMIC as well for their participation and their support for the Michigan Teacher of the Year program, to provide resources to not only the teacher to do the travel, but also to the other finalists and to the schools. So, you know, without that, it's very meaningful. And so, thank you to MIMIC and all the providers for your support of the Teachers of the Year. And for all the Teacher of the Year nominees, 178 of them, and the other 100,000 teachers we have, you know, all do a lot of great work. And as some people commented, that sometimes we, teachers get bashed, and that's unfortunate, because teachers are the heart and soul of our communities, and they're what brings our future, makes our future possible by enriching the lives of students. So, congratulations to all of the teachers in Michigan and to those who are representing them today and these finalists, Delia, Annette, and Cassandra, and of course, our Teacher of the Year. Congratulations to all of you and to your families and community. Celebrate, enjoy this, and have a great, you don't have to stay. That's probably the best part. You can take a few minutes, we'll take a few minute break here and allow people to leave if they'd like. So, congratulations, everybody.
I just want to say that in all the time I've known you, I have, my abiding memory of your face is going to be one of openness, curiosity, and almost always a smile. Unless it was so serious, it took so much energy, but you didn't muster it.
Thank you so much.
I just want to say that in all the time I've known you, I have, my abiding memory of your face is going to be one of openness, curiosity, and almost always a smile. Unless it was so serious, it took so much energy, but you didn't muster it.
Thank you so much.
I just want to say that in all the time I've known you, I have, my abiding memory of your face is going to be one of openness, curiosity, and almost always a smile.
Well, sometimes, let me get so much energy, but you didn't muster it.
Thank you so much.
I just want to say that in all the time I've known you, I have, my abiding memory of your face is going to be one of openness, curiosity, and almost always a smile.
Well, sometimes, let me get so much energy, but you didn't muster it.
Thank you so much.
I just want to say that in all the time I've known you, I have, my abiding memory of your face is going to be one of openness, curiosity, and almost always a smile.
So, congratulations to all of the teachers in Michigan and to those who are representing them today and these finalists, Delia, Annette, and Cassandra, and of course, our Teacher of the Year. Congratulations to all of you and to your families and community. Celebrate, enjoy this, and have a great, you don't have to stay. Many local districts and others have asked Hamilton and Hamilton LINKS to explain how we created this environment at Hamilton. And really, the word synergy kept coming back to me. And it is when, if we're all working towards the same goal, it has a much greater effect than us working on this individually. And that's an example of the pictures up there of our LINKS banquet and how many students that we had there, and community members as well. So now Sidney and Rachel are here representing her group for Ed Barr's Family Diner and the rest of Hamilton LINKS to provide examples of how their group and others have created the synergistic effect in Hamilton.
So people have been involved from the very beginning, and this is how we were able to grow as a program so quickly. And the video productions class at the high school helped us film and create a video where we could help raise awareness by sharing information about autism and the LINKS program and what we do every day. And many students and parents were involved in helping create that video.
Just so, we started, my LINKS group started in ninth grade. We wanted to tell others about autism spectrum disorder to help them understand it, but autism is not a bad thing. It is a gift to me. Just because I use it to present to others, I've learned a lot about myself. But we started sharing my story to the staff as well. So I presented to my classmates to know what LINKS is and why it's so important to join. And my behavior is just communication along with others with autism.
And we started expanding from informing the staff and students in the classroom to informing our community. We presented to our Board of Education to share what LINKS is all about and what we do.
Also, we just started informing our stories to the bus drivers, coaches, youth group leaders, staff, parents, and business owners through a community conversation.
Every year, we have a LINKS banquet at the end of the year. And last year, there were about 200 people who attended. And students and parents spoke to share their stories and how they're involved in the LINKS program. And overall, it's just always a fun day where we get to celebrate our involvement in LINKS and all of the accomplishments that we made in only a couple of years.
So by making, being aware of autism and LINKS, LINKS peer-to-peer group, we also wear our shirts in the homecoming parade.
LINKS continues to grow and go even beyond our community. And we've had many opportunities to inform other school districts and many other people across the state about LINKS. And local districts started coming to our school to observe what we do on a daily basis and see what LINKS is all about. And we feel honored and proud to be able to share our story with others and to be able to see how they are starting to impact our communities as well.
So here in Lansing, I presented in front of 220 people, and I just love coming here. Also, we went already down to Camel Zoo to speak about autism. We went, there's a conference with Maureen and Ms. Myers. Mr. Tebow also came, and that's our school superintendent.
So many kids have joined LINKS since the program started in 2013. It went from only eight kids to now a couple hundred kids who are involved. And the synergistic effect was created where everyone is working together to accomplish things. Kids started informing others about LINKS, and students began initiating many events without the parents and teachers even involved. Kids planned a surprise birthday party or organized a wear blue day in April for autism awareness. And by all working together, we've become such a powerful group.
We quickly learned that this was something bigger than ourselves, and people wanted to be involved. And so parents and business owners, they donated time and money and lunches for our LINKS lunch meetings to help problem solve and to enjoy time together. So we appreciated that.
So the big impact is I already got a job at Hawksness. It's our local restaurant. That's me and my boss, Mary. Mary thinks we got like delivery, like restaurants, and other parents of like kids in LINKS would deliver and donate food to our groups. So that's what Hawksness does for us.
LINKS is more than just a program. To all of us involved, LINKS means friends. LINKS is like one big family, and LINKS means community to us. And so many lasting friendships and memories have been made because of LINKS, and its impact has just been truly immeasurable. For me personally, I've just tremendously enjoyed being a part of LINKS and getting to work with kids like Sidney. And they've just inspired me to pursue a career in special education. But that definitely isn't the only impact LINKS has had outside of school. As LINKS and friends, we all love to participate in and invite each other to many social events outside of school. And to just name a few, we love going bowling or to prom and other dances, and out to eat or to sports events. And because of LINKS, many students with autism have been given the opportunity to be more involved in social events, as Sidney will be explaining a little about.
Just, okay, go ahead. Just, they surprise, they have surprise birthday parties for me. That is awesome. And 10th grade, this is 10th grade, I loved camouflage. But in 11th grade, they did it again, and they got me this Chernobyl t-shirt. They celebrated my preferred interest. So yeah.
Yes, so as Sidney was saying, this year, my friends and I decided to surprise her again with another surprise birthday party. And I know that one of her preferred interests is Chernobyl. And so I decided to make this shirt for her and surprise her there at her party. And on the front, it says "I love Chernobyl" with a picture of a painting that she actually painted in art class of Chernobyl. And then on the back, it says "Number one Chernobyl fan."
Well, I was a homecoming representative in 10th grade. So before LINKS, my anxiety would be like at a nine or a 10. I would have like only few outgoing like activities I would do with friends. But with LINKS, it's just my anxiety lowered to like one or two. And now I get to go to like a lot of activities with my friends outside of school, like 12 times per year.
Today, Sidney and I are just representatives of LINKS, but as we mentioned before, currently there's about 200 students involved, including 11 students who have ASD or other disabilities who are being supported and involved in LINKS. And this year, a LINKS class was added to our curriculum, and it just focused primarily on teaching about the characteristics of autism and how to help students with autism on a daily basis. In just this past week, we had our third annual LINKS banquet celebration.
So by synergy being like creative, we had formed big old like friendships that are really true friendships too.
And we've definitely seen the impact we've already made. We know how powerful our group has become, but most importantly, we understand the power of each individual and that we can each make such a big difference.
So as we mentioned, this is just a really great example of the success that you can have when you have an entire school, community, administration, the folks from START, the departments, parents, general education, and special education coming together, you know, to put just some really great strategies and interventions into place to help create some really positive outcomes for students with a disability. So it's just, and I just want to mention too, which Sidney didn't even know I was going to mention this, was when I first started chatting with Kelly about coming, one of the things she mentioned to me was that it was a dream of Sidney's to come and present before the State Board of Education.
Oh my gosh.
Very cool.
So you have helped her to successfully chalk something off of her butt.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I'm very happy to be here in Lansing. Lansing's our city.
Do you want to present the t-shirts?
Um, sure. So we got a present for you guys. If you like t-shirts, woohoo! T-shirts. So, um, we got a t-shirt for you.
Well, thank you.
Yeah, we got a t-shirt for you.
Thank you so much, Sidney.
Anytime, and here you go, ma'am. Don't worry, there's more coming, so don't count.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much for being here and sharing with us. That was very exciting.
Anytime.
I'm always here.
Anytime.
See you here.
Yeah. Thanks.
David?
Thanks for allowing us to come. And I just, I have to say that I'm so proud of all of them. You know, I have two kids that don't struggle with what Sidney brings to school every day. But to watch them grow, they're both LINKS. As a dad, to see them see what our school, community has done, and for them as an eight-year-old and 11-year-old to want to be a part of something bigger because it's bigger than themselves is one of the best things I've been able to see as a superintendent. We can put programs in place and we can do things. This has changed a culture in a district to truly understanding the uniqueness of all of our individuals. My kids are changed as young people because they've had the opportunity to work inside of this program and to see the impact that all of these ladies have had. So I just want to say thank you to them for coming, but also to you for the program and supporting it. And we'd love to allow this to grow and use us as a sounding piece for you as we move forward. Because Sidney is an amazing young lady, and we have a whole bunch of other amazing kids back in Hamilton who truly believe in the individual differences. And when we work together, great things can happen. So we really appreciate your time. And if there's anything, any follow-up down the road, Brian, you know how to get ahold of us. So thanks again.
Thank you to all of you for being here. (applause)
Great.
Pretty good? Pretty good.
Now comes the challenging. Just a hero.
I love the feeling.
No, that's.
We celebrated our 38th wedding anniversary on, we didn't celebrate it on Saturday, but that's what it was.
Would you do for, to celebrate?
Thank you so much.
Well. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Yeah. Just call me up and I can say.
Right. I took her out to a nice Middle Eastern dinner at La Pita.
Oh.
Here in Dearborn. And then we were going to go antiquing, but we ended up spending the time at Sam's Club. And then we saw the movie, The Reverend, The Revenant. So.
Did you like it?
I appreciated it.
Yeah, you can't like it.
I mean, it's a kind of a grim story.
Oh, it's so dark. I almost loved the theater.
Oh my. I tell you, I really appreciate the cinematography.
Oh, it wasn't that bad.
Breathtaking.
His use of natural light was phenomenal.
Yes.
He's probably the best cinematographer ever.
It reminded me a lot of movies in black and white because of all the snow and, you know, sky contrast with the.
Well, and that, with the darkness.
Someone had told me that Robert Redford had done, what, Jeremiah Johnson or something like this.
Yeah.
I never saw that one.
I don't think I ever did too. But I've heard of it. But.
Okay, DTMB is supposed to be making it cooler.
Well, once or twice a year, we celebrate by seeing.
Well, my wife and I have five years, I mean, 43.
Okay, okay.
Hey, the next item on today's committee, the whole agenda, is a presentation on Michigan Department of Education's annual report. Do they have a copy? Do they have a copy of these? It's very exciting that we have our first annual report to hand out. It's our first opportunity to do this. Obviously, as we move forward, we'll continue to grow and improve it, but we want to share with you the highlights of it. It's intended to highlight and showcase a few of the many good things that are going on in the department and celebrate our successes. In the future, we will certainly use measures and goals and progress towards goals as part of this report to show how we're moving to becoming a top 10 state. As you see in the document, we have meeting the needs of Michigan learners, and we highlight some of the things we've done, like early childhood and K-12 science standards and fewer hours of testing and improved turnaround on assessment reporting. We talk about the co-constructing with the statewide education and business community, a cohesive vision for making Michigan a top 10 state. We talk about the establishment of a partnership model for academically and financially struggling districts by gathering stakeholders together to work together to resolve the issues. We talk about promoting a customer service focus within the department, that we're here to help districts be successful. Yes, we have some oversight responsibilities, but doing it in the lens of customer service. Then you can see the top 10. The main focus for the first year of my superintendency was the development of the state's plan to become a top 10 state in 10 years. We had wide stakeholder input, was sought from a variety of partners and stakeholders to help us create this vision. We also asked the offices for creating retrospectives of things that they have done to support districts. And some of the examples of that are reduced reporting, increased educational attainment, stakeholder and partner engagement, improved state assessment, and decreased testing time and reporting those assessment results within 48 hours. Those are just some samples. We talked about supports for schools. These efforts reflect my goal to ensure that MDE is first and foremost a support to our local schools and districts. I've asked the team to look at ways to be innovative in their services that we provide. One initiative that is new this year is the Innovation Council, which is tasked with looking at new approaches proposed by those closest to the work, our local schools and districts, and paving a way that that innovation can occur at a local district level by removing obstacles at the state level. Talked about reduced reporting and streamlined operations. I also asked the staff to continue to move MDE away from the compliance-based organization towards the role of supporting our local schools and districts as partners to help students be successful. As I promised during my interview, we simplified and reduced the length of several required reports and shortened the time it takes to review the information so that it can be implemented faster at a local level. Increased educational attainment at the heart of all MDE's effort is the goal of increasing educational attainment for all Michigan students. We cite some of the examples there, like early childhood, focus on career and technical education. And we talked about key to our success is involving the voices of multiple stakeholders and partners, that we in the educational field, we are the experts, we know the issues, we know how we can improve the system, and we have to listen to the voices of educators in the classroom, our administrators, our principals, and the business community that works so closely with our schools. School visits, I've asked each of my deputies and office directors to visit up to 10 local school districts. That outreach helps us remember why we do what we do, and that's the students. It also gives us the opportunity to see the great things that are occurring in our schools, to hear about things that we can improve at, to learn about from promising practices and to share those promising practices with other districts. We'll be launching that website. So it's a great opportunity to learn and celebrate the great things that are going on and to help solve problems. Talked about improved state assessment, decreased testing time. We shortened the test by two and a half to eight hours, depending on the grade level. And we saw reporting coming back within 48 hours of students taking the M-step. We also had a successful transition to the SAT. As I said, this is the first edition of what will be an annual overview of the department's work. In the future, reports, you will see data reflecting our measures towards becoming a top 10 state. We'll also be sharing stories of success from the department and from our local schools and ISDs and other partners. And we'll feature promising practice. and we'll feature promising practices that are changing the profession and innovation that occurs. Once you get an opportunity to look at this report in more detail, we'd love to hear from you on ways you think we can improve the report. Again, this is an opportunity for us to highlight and celebrate the good things we're doing, but also report to people in the future, are we reaching the goals that we set forth in becoming a top-ten state? So I want to thank Allison and the team for their work in putting together this first report. The first one's always the most difficult one, and from there it'll get a little easier as we go through the process again. Any comments from board members? John?
Can I say, nice job and good work. As I've been moving around myself, I keep bumping into educators who are relaying how positive and constructive and real, you know, the kind of work that you and the team here are doing, both to move forward some of the affirmative strategies, but make headway on things like simplifying their lives and reporting, which are very important, you know, which we've often talked a lot about, but never followed through on. So the field, such as it is, keeps saying how pleased they are to have this real customer service approach and engagement with them, so I appreciate that very much.
Lupe, and then Craig?
And also, I have to say that I want to piggyback on what John said, but from the legislators' side of the spectrum, because I've met with some legislators, and they're very pleased with this top-ten in ten years. They feel that you have opened the door, together with the department, to communicate with them. And so, in their words, they said they love you. So they love working with you. So that's a good sign. They're very excited about this document, and I really commend you for, and the staff for putting this together. It's very impressive, very professionally put together. And I look forward to a new school year in September as we proceed with this endeavor that we have in front of us. I think we're headed in the right direction.
Thank you, Lupe. Craig, and then Dr. Z.
Brian, was a set of medical goals a part of this?
Not yet, but they will be as we move forward, the top-ten and ten. We'll have that very shortly, and it'll be things like mapping us and showing, you know, where we're at today, where we want to be, and then look at us in comparison to other states who collect the same data, and even internationally that collect the same data. So future reports will be much more about, you know, the data. Here's our third-grade reading score, here's where we are at, here's where we need to be if we want to be a top-ten state, and how do we compare? You know, NAP scores, where are we currently at, where do we need to be? You know, college CTE and college credit attainment, here's where we're currently at, here's where we need to be as examples. But we'll be bringing those to the board in the very near future. And next report will be much more data-driven and reporting where we're at.
That's off.
Eileen after. Dr. Z?
I just wanted to say a word of thanks. These last couple of pages where you have State Board of Education actions, I'm always asked, what's the State Board of Education done? And now I can copy that. And just the, you know, the chief responsibilities in the MDE and the statistics for Michigan schools. I find that kind of overview very helpful, and I appreciate it seeing you.
Thank you.
So the document's fantastic, and it's transparent, it's absolutely perfect, it's well-laid out. My first response to it is, ooh, it'll be used to update or to help train the new, orient new legislators coming in. So I would suggest that as you move forward, that it be a November, October, November report so that it's absolutely up to date. Because I can't think of anything better than this and the other document that we saw earlier on Legislative Affairs to get people up to some, up to some.
Thank you. Kathleen?
I like it too. I think it's a very good idea to summarize everything that we've been doing because we just don't know. We don't know what the department does, we don't know what the board does. So it's very helpful. And I was gonna comment with Richard, so. Putting the fast facts and statistics in this is very handy. Because I know the department produces all kinds of reports, but people don't know how to get them necessarily, unless you're in business. But this is very, very helpful. And I think Eileen's idea of using it for orienting new board members, so that is a good idea. That would be very helpful. But this is very good, having it all in one place, I think.
And as I said, it's the first edition, and it's a very good edition, but we'll get better even as we go forward.
Thank you.
Michelle?
Yeah, I agree with everything that has been said. I just had a question with the Governor's Education Commission.
Yep.
And how is this integrated into what they're doing?
I'll let Craig answer as well, but certainly I serve on that, John will be serving on that, Eileen will serve on that, and of course Craig serves on that, and.
Kyle.
Kyle, thank you. I'm staring right at him. I'm staring right at him, and I can't come up with his name. Deputy Superintendent Kyle Garah will be staffing that as well for the department and the Governor's Office. So I think, you know, certainly I've been understood that it will start with top-ten and ten, and then we'll focus on other issues as well, but certainly top-ten and ten will be a focus of it. Craig?
Yep. Brian, you and I have already talked. We want to match the two efforts. Why? Reinvent the wheel.
All right. Allison, thanks again for your great work in putting this together, and everybody else who helped. So John, where are the schedules? Do you want to go into some afternoon activities, or do you want to go to Detroit? So are you ready to do your report?
So we'll go to.
I'm gonna go to the president's report, then?
Do we have to go into formal section?
All right, I can do that. We'll call to order the regular meeting at ten-fifty, and we'll go to the president's report.
What do you order?
Yep.
Are we supposed to hear from Mr. Lemons?
Yeah, he's here. They're putting their presentation together, so we're gonna do a couple of things while we're waiting for that to get completed. As soon as we get the high sign that they're ready, we will go to him.
Okay, thank you. Briefly, I did, building out of our retreat, Brian was nicely remembering, let's share any priorities or budget for our request. I pulled a few that had been developed, and I think are embedded in the top-ten from the post-secondary attainment work we found, guidance counseling enhancement and early post-secondary credit-taking. And if others have other things, we need to make sure to get those in front of us or get them in front of Brian. So please do that, and I think it's such a good reinforcement if we can make it. I can't not say, you know, the Detroit, the legislature's done. I don't think they did the full job, obviously, with Detroit schools, rejecting any quality management of all public schools and continuing to allow the charters to operate without constraints. You know, I think it's very troubling in terms of whether we'll have a long-term solution that will not have BTS unravel again. So that is unfortunate, though we will all need to work together to try to do the best we can with what we've got. The budget, you know, did include some modest enhancements to early literacy and career technical and other areas. Didn't go far enough to really reinvest in higher education and access and education itself. I think as the Governor's Commission, Craig and I had a chance to talk. Two, you know, I'm certainly hopeful we can make the most out of that and use it as an opportunity to, A, yes, continue to advance the strategies that are in the top-ten and ten, B, take an even broader look at what's the education system of the future that we really need that helps all young people move forward and get the skills they need and achieve at the highest possible level. And I do hope it will, you know, be a place to take up, you know, some of the big challenges that we aren't yet taking up around really tracking the success model of states that are high-performing, like Massachusetts, and that's how do we change our school finance model so that we're putting disproportionate resources where they're needed to help kids who have further to travel? And changing our finance model to reflect the cost and the achievement that is needed to move and make the targeted investments. And, you know, we need to still wrestle with this charter choice new school policy. Otherwise, we will continue to see, you know, if we just track Massachusetts, we'd have a very tightly quality-constrained new school creation approach, and we have differential funding for poor kids and kids who have further to travel in school communities that need more resources. So those two things I hope we can talk about and animate in the Twenty-First Century Education Commission. And I guess the last thing I'd say, the horrific events of Orlando, you know, just remind us all that LGBT people are too often the target of hate and certainly not the agents of it. We should be reflecting upon that as we move ahead.
All right, I'm gonna give my report, and then we'll be ready for Detroit schools, it looks like. So just very quickly, busy, I wasn't able to give a report last time, so just want to talk real quick about, we, I attended the National Assessment Governing Board, made some welcoming comments, attended the Detroit News Editorial Board where we talked educational issues, gave the speech at the Henry Ford Collegiate Academy commencement ceremony, the first graduating class of the five-year program there. Met with the Benton Harbor teachers over their concerns about what has been taking place in Benton Harbor and other struggling districts. Did school visits, as we talked about, Zinsler Elementary, Muskegon Heights, Oxford, Brown City, Akron-Fare Grove, Bay-Aronak, Birmingham, many others. And some of the visits, I really was excited to see that districts are providing options for kids that they understand this deeper learning that we want, and they're already starting to go there, that options like CTE, five-year program, students developing their own goals, you know, students being very active in art, music, foreign languages, even into preschool. One of the most exciting things was, at one of the schools, it felt like a college campus because the students were working together, groupings, there was four classrooms, and then there was space where the classes went out and worked together. And the students were preparing projects and preparing presentations and working and debating with each other and having to justify their answers that they were getting about to present. And one of the most interesting things is, one of the other functions they had to do is come up with their own grading rubric. And the teacher said, once the students started developing their own grading rubrics, that they raised the standards themselves even higher than what the teachers were setting the standards at. And so just some very exciting things happening in our schools around the state, in urban, rural, you know, in the UP and in the tri-county area, just a lot of real exciting things happening. Also, over the past year, as I mentioned, one hundred and fifty-three school districts have been visited. They shared with us fifty-three best practices that we'll be sharing with other school districts, schools. I think at first we were a little nervous about the visits, but have become very appreciative of the visits, where they do get to share if there's some minor problems that we can work on together to resolve, and then share the promising practices and really celebrate the great things that are happening in their school district. Also attended, we had our retreat on 5/18 at the Michigan School for the Deaf. We had the Governor's Higher Education Summit, we had the Policy Conference. We also had the graduation ceremony at the Michigan School of the Deaf, which was very exciting and gratifying. I do want to thank the Michigan School for the Deaf for hosting our retreat and the student body government for leading our tour. Quick update on school aid. A lot of good things did happen in the school aid package with districts getting sixty to one-hundred-and-twenty dollars per pupil, although I remember when I was lobbyist and we were celebrating two to three hundred a pupil. But, you know, it's a different world, but we're still gonna celebrate sixty to one-hundred-and-twenty dollars. And there was other good things that Ben, I think, is hiding from me. I don't know why, but Ben and his team, the government ops team, really did a great job in terms of, you know, getting us a position for school safety, getting us a position to continue to work on Chief Financial, Chief Information Officer, to continue to work with and coordinate our reporting requirements for school districts, to continue to look at ways to reduce and consolidate that reporting, as well as several other pieces that we had asked for in the budget. So really, in terms of everything that happened with Flint and Detroit and the money that, with the economy and the revenue estimating conference coming up a little short, K-12 still did pretty good in the overall budget, and so we're very thankful for that. Top-ten update, forty-five stakeholders representing multiple perspectives and groups gathered here in the past week to help us construct our plan to make us a top-ten in ten years. We spent a great deal of time processing areas of focus and possible initiatives that will bring our top-ten in ten plan from words on a page to actionable strategies. Consensus was reached that our FOKI area would be learning-centered supports, effective education workforce, and strategic partnership supported through a strong systematic infrastructure. All of this input will be used to move us to fully develop our strategic plan with those things we talked about a few minutes ago on how we're gonna judge whether we're a top-ten state and reporting on those each year, those guideposts to see, are we marching towards becoming a top-ten state? And we also have brought in stakeholders on beginning the process of reauthorization of every Student Success Act and working at nine different strategy groups that will be working to provide input to the State Board as we move forward to develop our plan. We had legislators here, we had legislative staffers, we had educators, we had teachers, we had administrators, we had the business community. Again, really opening the door to really creating our preferred future, that we really have an exciting opportunity to do this in a different way, and really more in a partnership way where we're working together to move districts forward. Yes, we'll have accountability as part of that process, but first accountability will be how do we help each other be successful, and then go from there. So we'll continue to work with the State Board and the stakeholders as we march through a process to make recommendations and to have a final report to submit to the feds by the end of this calendar year. So with that, I think we are ready for Detroit. So we'll go back to the meeting. Oh, are you? Oh, no problem, we can wait. You give me the, you give me the high-five when you're ready. I thought you were ready, but that's great. We'll go back then, and we'll do the approval of State Board of Education minutes, approval of the minutes of the regular and committee of the whole meeting on May tenth, twenty sixteen. Is there a motion? Support? Any questions, comments? Seeing none, all in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Approval of the record of the State Board of Education retreat. I'll undertake a motion to approve the record of the retreat of May eighteenth.
It's moved.
Moved and supported. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, all. I'm sorry.
It was impressive to see the list of people, everybody named, that testified
Oh, yes.
He's the best.
Nurse, we have to say, does an outstanding job.
Thank you.
She did a very good job.
That's what you pay me to do.
But you do it well. All right. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion opposed, nay. Motion carries. So discussion items, state and federal legislative report. Are you ready to move to that? Sandra?
Yeah, there isn't much to report.
Okay.
Did you have anything, Marie?
No, I mean, other than, you know, the Detroit stuff, which is gonna be discussed next.
Right.
All right. Well, we like, we like those reports. All right, consent agenda. Well, we can't do that yet, can we, because we didn't do the, can we do consent?
Well, you didn't do public comments.
Yeah, we didn't do public comments, so we shouldn't do that. And we don't want to do comments by board meetings, board members, yet. I think we've completed everything. We can't do introduction of new employees yet. Wow, this is a quandary. Because we didn't give public comment. So, yes? Did you want to sing and dance?
Yes.
Okay.
It's so very close that you were able to perceive, if that's what I have. I was going to jump the ship on board comments.
Okay.
And tell all, everybody here to make sure that they go to the moth.org, where they will find our very own Michelle.
What is it? Say that again.
The moth, T-H-E.
Oh, yes, she performed, yes.
Yes. And look up Michelle. Yes. And you had how many stories? Because I'm finding one from the triangle.
Yeah, the shirt-waste fire one. I, I only have.
I, on YouTube, I only have one on the Moth, but on the Moth, it was nationally broadcast last weekend.
So, I just have to ask, yes, I know, I just have to ask, do you practice your storytelling here or there?
My husband practices, I wing it.
I was going to say, and I don't think you have time for a narrative at home very often, so.
I'll bet.
And I also wanted to just point out that ECS, I won't have an update this week, but I, this month, but I know that they have been in the state talking to people about school finance, so. And would like very much, the executive director would like very much, once again, to come and present here at the board meeting. I think the last time he was here was with Nancy Danhoff, probably four years ago, five years, I mean, four years.
Kathleen, do you have a report?
I don't know if you want anything on the SDSSA, but the Senate Appropriations Committee has acted on the appropriations bill for the Department of Education and for aid to education, and it's, they've increased some things and decreased some things, and they've increased aid to charter schools, for instance, decreased some of the other ideas, other areas. I have a list of you if you want to see it, I circulate it. And there's going to be, the Department of Affairs staff person, consultant for NASB, thinks there probably will be conversations pretty soon about, from both Republicans and Democrats on the sequester, and whether they can loosen that up, and they think after the election, something might happen about that, which would be a helpful, a helpful side. But the US Department of Education appropriation has reduced $200 million, so that really limits some of their ability to do things. And some of the other members of the committee, of the NASB committee, talked about their state's concerns about the accountability provisions in the SSA, and how much flexibility there really is, and the rules and regulations, the rules and regulations. If we have any questions and comments on that, we have to get them in by July. If you'd like to get them into NASB by July 1st, so if there's anything that the staff has that I could be, we could be helpful with, they should let me know, and I can send it to NASB, that would be good. Any other areas that you may comment on, if you'd like to get examples, anything that you see as problems and needs to be adjusted or whatever, so we can, we can present a unified position to the Department of the Regulations, and Congress if they want to change anything. So, I'd appreciate if the staff would be willing to.
I had a, is anything? I had a question. So, I know they're leaving more to the states on whatever those accountability measures are, but what are the parameters that they're putting forth as, you know, they go, you know, are there parameters that the US Department of Ed are putting forward that it has to be within this certain?
It's supposed to comply with the implement the law, not beyond the law.
Yeah, so the rules haven't come out yet, so we haven't seen the rules yet.
Some of the regulations, they do have a comment.
Propose, so there's propose, there's proposals, so in the proposals, what are they, I'm just wondering, if we're going to comment on the rules?
So, I don't know, with comparing comment, are there's a staff working on comments for the proposed regs?
We will work on them.
Could you let me know?
And we could probably get you a link to the regs if you want to look at them.
Proposals?
Right.
That would be good. Okay, I think that's enough. One other area that one of the states talked about was the parent engagement piece and what that means and how will that, how they would propose to implement that. I'm not a concern about that. I don't know if that's true pushing it up, but you're meeting with the stakeholders.
All right, we are, we will more than surpass all the rules and regs on requirement, forget comment, public comment, yeah. We're going to do a very wide swath.
NASB would be helpful to have it on the voice, express, let me know, and I can get it.
All right, if there's no other board member, yep, yep, so?
Um, a couple of things. One is a point of pride. Could you pass that over, Lupe?
Ready?
Yes. I just wanted to point out that my, one of my children is in this wonderful book that is published with the assistance of 826 Michigan and a number of other organizations. It's from Roberto Clemente in southwest Detroit. I know, you can't get your parking pass now.
No, right there is your son.
Yes, this is, this is my 10-year-old, Cassidy Vega, who in his bio says he was born in Mexico, but that is fiction. He's got quite an imagination. But it's a wonderful book, and the foreword is by Richard Blanco, who's the poet laureate for, poet laureate for Obama. And it's just a wonderful book, and it's both in English and Spanish, and I'm just so proud of the school and Ms. Lowe and the fourth grade teachers who worked on this, that I wanted to share it with you, and also, you know, especially Cassidy's contributions.
See, not only is his bio in there, but he, one of his poems that he...
Yeah, he's written a poem in there. He's very, he loves poetry.
So, how do we get it?
Um, I think it's on Amazon, I think you can buy it, and it's called, I should know this, rare air, rare, R-A-R-E, air, the air you breathe. So, yeah, it's $8, and the proceeds go to the, it might be more on Amazon, though. Proceeds go to the organization that does this work. I also was at the SEAC meeting this, beginning of this month, and was really impressed, they brought in new people and graduate, you know, paying people for their service. But I just wanted to, again, I know I keep commending her, but Teri Chapman is just, and the folks there in the special ed office, is just such strong leadership and is really done a wonderful job at that meeting, bringing diverse voices together. And also, I don't know if people are aware, she is, you know, really trying to look at, sort of doing some reorganization, and that I think will really improve special ed services. Not that they were, I mean, I've always been appreciative of them, but I think is making, has really listened to a lot of different people from all different perspectives and is implementing some changes there that I think are going to be really effective, especially around ensuring that, like, certain disputes around services are resolved in a fair and in a fair way, so.
All right, Lupe?
Can, well, I guess we can talk about anything we want, right?
Yeah.
You're the boss. We're doing some sort of reasoning, some sort of bound of the...
Well, I want to take, I want to take, I guess, a point of personal privilege, because I really would like to recognize Ben.
I was going to, I've tried to recognize him twice, but he hasn't been in the room.
Ben's in trouble.
Because I, I have, I have something to give him, if it's okay, if I move over here to this side of the room. And Benjamin, and I have become real good friends, and I guess you all claim me as a real good friend, too, because of all the work that he has done in behalf of the State Board of Education and the Department of, the Michigan Department of Education, he's truly been an excellent lobbyist, opening the door to us with the legislators, and also the legislators knowing truly what we stand for as the State Board of Education, and also what the Michigan Department of Education truly is and truly does. So, as you know, Benjamin is flying to other ventures, other, another career, and he's going to enhance what he has learned here and take it to a different level. So, I know you stand with me in saying, stand with me! And saying that Benjamin has truly served us well, and we wish him the very best, and we're going to miss him a lot. I know Superintendent Weston is hoping that this wasn't happening, because Benjamin has truly been a partner. And so, here's a little something for you, Benjamin.
Thank you.
And I have to give you a Mexican hug.
Thanks very much.
We thank you so much for everything you did.
I did try to start the meeting with a personal privilege to mention Ben and that he's leaving us, but I guess he was out working. And I tried a second time to honor Ben by saying the great job he and the team did in terms of the school aid budget and the department budget, in terms of things that we had requested where, and he was, he and his team were able to get. But that's just this year. We certainly appreciate all of Ben's work, and he is going to be missed. He has certainly done an outstanding job opening doors, building relationships, and helping the department be successful in some of the work that we're doing. So, Ben, you are going to be missed. Just make sure you tell your new boss that we're canceling the SAT on Monday, the 26, since they stole you from us, but other than that, we wish you the best in your new endeavors, and I guess we'll still let you into the department.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ben.
Maybe Benjamin would like to tell us where he's going.
Ben? I kind of announced where he's going, he's going to the College Board.
Yes, yes, I'll be Director of Government Relations for College Board.
That's a great job.
And I'll have the opportunity to work with all of you still, and I look forward to that. Hopefully, you'll still answer my calls when I call. That includes you, Mr. Superintendent.
Ben who?
Well, you're used to work here.
Thank you all for the opportunity to work with you. I really appreciate each and every one of you. Thank you so much for allowing me to do what you've allowed me to do and give me this opportunity. Thank you.
All right, so the Detroit presentation isn't going to be ready for another 15, 20 minutes, so we can either go at ease for 15, 20 minutes, or we can take an early lunch for an hour and come back and have Detroit present at that time. Would the board like to take a 20-minute break, or would you like to...
What about during the, the...
Go to lunch.
All right, we're going to be adjourned for one hour lunch.
Is it ready?
Yeah. Is it here?
Five minutes.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll be here in a couple of minutes, lunch.
Okay.
Yep, yep.